Call to order, City Council Work Sessions for the CDV Scranton Forks for Tuesday, February 23rd, 2021. It is now 5:00. City Clerk, please call roll.
Mayor Speaker.
Here.
Council President Ron Holcett.
Here.
Council Vice President Tim Ranco.
Here.
Council Members Clarence Better.
Here.
Dale Holmes.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Mark Demers.
Present.
Brian Larson.
Here.
Does turn. Quorum number one, consider finding plans and specifications of the 2020 City Project Number Four for Street and ADA improvements. Mr. Emery.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Council. So yes, we have completed plans and specifications for the Street and ADA Improvement Project on Demers Avenue and Business Highway Two. As you kind of recall, you know, kind of the scope of that project will include a mill and overlay right off the end of the Sorley Bridge there, kind of between the bridge and the flood wall. And then along Demers Avenue, we'll be replacing the stamped cross, concrete crosswalks, as those are in pretty tough shape. And then on the west side of Business Highway Two, just south of Demers, between Demers and Third Avenue there, we'll be replacing that sidewalk and the brick pavers on the west side of Business Highway Two there. So, so really what I'm looking, I guess, for from the Council would be just giving us authorization to proceed with advertising for bids. And then we would look at setting the bid date for 10:00 AM on April 6th.
Anybody have any questions for Steve? Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Steve, will we get the plans before next week?
I could get those to you. Yes, I do have a set completed and ready to basically deliver to Megan. So if the Council would like to see them too, I could, I could send out a copy of the plans.
Yeah, just a PDF is all we need.
Just of the plans, Mark?
Sure. I mean, do you have the spec too?
I do. If you want to see 300 pages of specs, yes.
Well, I mean, as PDF, right? I mean, it doesn't.
Yeah, it is PDF.
Cost anything.
Yep.
Anybody else have any questions? Mr. Johnson.
Steve, I don't know. I recall the mayor wanting a crosswalk from, you know, from Cabela's across right into the theater area there. Is that included in this or what?
Yeah, that, you know, the stamped crosswalk will be removed and then we will be striping that crosswalk. So that crosswalk will remain.
Thank you.
That big block one.
Anybody else have any questions? See none, sir?
Thank you.
Move on to number two, request for report of feasibility for 10th Street Northeast for reconstruction and street improvements. Mr. Emery.
Thank, yep, thank you again, Mr. President. As you recall, and I apologize, it got to kind of be a little bit of time in between here. But so last fall, we had discussions on what we wanted to do, you know, for our 2022 federal project. As you recall, every four years, the city does receive about 860,000 in federal sub-target dollars. And so last fall, we had, I think, kind of agreed that we were gonna, we were leaning towards, for a project, we would look at redoing 10th Street Northeast between 11th Avenue and 15th Avenue. And then also look at kind of improving and urbanizing 10th Street Northeast there from 15th Avenue Northeast, going east there, a distance of approximately 1,100 feet. And at that time, there was kind of discussion, I think, Mark, you even brought up the question about if there's been discussion with, you know, adjacent property owners, you know, how we could handle that property on the south side, since there was some railroad property there. Since that time, David did have discussion, I think, with a property owner or two. There seemed to be, you know, favor or interest in the project, I should say. David and even myself have tried to reach out to the railroad, kind of in regards to, you know, being able to assess that property. We have unfortunately not been able to even get a return phone call. So I guess kind of with that, you know, my thought was, you know, even with receiving federal sub-target dollars, there's a portion of that project that's still going to be assessed. So, you know, kind of following Chapter 429 rules, regulations, you know, one of the first steps in that process is to complete a report of feasibility. Once you complete that, we would look at holding an improvement hearing. And my thought on that was, you know, it's kind of a couple steps that we're going to need to do with, you know, again, looking at assessing that project. So my thought was, you know, if we could get approval to proceed with that report of feasibility, you know, do that, we would hold the improvement hearing and then we would, you know, truly hear from those residents, their business owners, property owners, I guess, as far as if they want, you know, if they want that project, which I think would just help the City Council also decide if that's the project we want to, you know, use our federal dollars for then in 2022. So, so I guess really what I was, you know, again, just looking for council direction on is if, you know, you would authorize us to proceed with that, preparing that feasibility report.
Remind me, Steve, was there any underground work that had to be done also that maybe Mr. Stordahl or the Water and Light would have to do?
Yeah, what we were looking at doing there is, because right down the middle of 10th Street, there, there's sanitary sewer that's clay tile. So we would look at replacing that sanitary sewer. We would also look at replacing catch basins and kind of the catch basin leads. The mainline storm sewer, Jason had that cleaned and televised last summer. And the mainline sewer overall looked good. So I do not believe we would look at replacing the mainline sewer. The other thing we got going for us a little bit is that mainline sewer is south of the, the street there. So again, what we would look at just doing is, is the storm sewer, catch basins, and the leads that would be underneath that street, the new street.
Anybody else have any questions? Mr. Vedder.
Thank you, Mr. President. Like Mr. Emery mentioned, this is federal sub-target dollars that we get every three to four years. Because they're federal dollars, there's a number of hoops that we've got to jump through. And the federal government wants to make sure that the federal dollars are used to enhance the transportation system within the community. And the community, over 50,000 people, has to have a metropolitan planning organization. And because the federal government looks at Grand Forks and East Grand Forks as one community, we do have an MPO that oversees all federal projects. Currently, on our tip, our Transportation Improvement Program is the roundabout at Bigland and Reinhardt. And you're looking to replace this project with that roundabout, but you can't do it the way you're doing it. You need to go through the MPO. I'm not saying that this isn't a viable project, but I don't think that we've got enough time to jump through all the federal hoops to get this done in time for the 2022 project date. Those funds can actually be accessed July of 2021, and construction could start now. So I think what we need to do with this project is extend it out to the next go around, the 2026 go around, and continue on with our roundabout and get those plans and specs done. They should almost be finalized because you've had over three years to do those now. And get that project going with these dollars. And then the next go around, jump through all the federal hoops to get this northeast, 10th Street Northeast project going at that point in time. Part of what you've got to do is you have to have, hire consultants to study the, the area and make sure that it is a project that is going to enhance the traffic flow. You have to have public input, and that all is, takes place through the MPO. So for right now, I would approach the MPO and say, for our 2026 dollars, we're looking at 10th Street. Can you hire the consultant and do the public input and get all that lined up for that, those years' dollars? That's already been done. We have hired a consultant to look at the Bigland Road project or the Bigland Road corridor. They've done the public inputs. And throughout that whole process, there were a number of recommendations for Bigland Road, one of which, and I think it was one of the top priorities, was the roundabout at Reinhardt and Bigland Road. Continuing to this day, I continue to get calls from my constituents saying, asking, when is that roundabout going to get built? And I keep telling them it's targeted for 2022. So to take a step back at this point in time and not do that project, I'm not in favor of it. And so I won't be voting to go forward with this, and we'll be pushing to have the roundabout done. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comments, Clarence. And yeah, you are correct. The roundabout on Bigland Road is currently on the STIP. I can verify with Mr. Hogan with the MPO. But I do believe we still do have time to amend the STIP to include 10th Street Northeast, if that's the direction the City Council wants to go. And we, we would need to, kind of as part of the process, you know, we would need to complete a project memorandum, you know, through the state. So, I mean, those are all good points Clarence has made. And I guess, you know, what I can do is between now and next Tuesday, also, I can, you know, visit with Earl Hogan, make sure, you know, that we still do have time to amend the STIP.
Mayor.
Thank you. I think, to Mr. Emery's point, I think it's good to just see what other projects may qualify for those federal dollars. I do agree with Mr. Vedder that we put the roundabout as kind of a marker on that, on that program for those dollars. But I think it was a bit of a placeholder. I think we still have a little wiggle there as a council. We may end up doing the roundabout this round. It may, it may be time to do it. But I do think there's still, if you find out, Steve Emery, if you still find out there's time to do an amendment and, and consider other projects, I think it's worthwhile. And at the same time, I think we have a little element of unknown on the roundabout, what the total cost would be, property acquisition. The final layout, I think, was still even in flux, which then also brings to the question of utility relocation, even those final costs for the property acquisition. And then the source of those funds. Lot of local dollars would go into this if it were to happen. And we'd have to figure out the source of those funds before we went forward with it. And I think that's kind of where we left it also, to say it's a maybe. At least that's my recollection. Maybe Mr. Vedder has a different recollection. Thanks.
Mr. Holmes.
Yeah, I think that the, I'm, I'm looking at it as Bigland Road is a pretty nice street to tear up right now. And that 10th Street is, I'm looking at the businesses out there this last summer got hit pretty hard with water. Hopefully, if we got that 10th Street fixed, Mr. Emery, if I'm not mistaken, that will hopefully help that issue out there in that industrial park with all the water.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing that we're, you're probably looking at there, Dale, is which I think is going to be a significant improvement. It was when Jason got that storm sewer cleaned this summer. They did find, there was a couple issues, you know, kind of downstream where, you know, for whatever reason, when that storm sewer was put in, some of those catch basins, manholes, whatever, didn't have some of the holes that had got plugged. So over years, over the years, you know, those structures, the pipe just filled up with dirt. So I think with Jason getting that clean, that's probably where you're going to see the, you know, most significant improvement in, in drainage out in that area.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, Steve, but it's, it's not a fix. It's a, it's a temporary thing. And I think if we put the street out there, put the new gutters and all that stuff out there, I'm, I'm concerned about those people in the industrial park paying the taxes they pay, and then they can't even get to their business to, to get any work done, or their employees can't get to them sometimes. And that kind of bothers me.
Yep.
Mr. Vedder.
Thank you. Bigland has the same issues, although Bigland is a corridor that darn near the whole city uses. It's not just the people that live out on the point trying to get north or south. We've got elementary schools and middle schools out there. So anyone on the north end that has kids in those schools is coming down during the morning and evening hours, all day long, because you've got basketball games going on at the middle school also, football games, soccer, and have you. There have been times when cars have been backed up from the stoplight at the bridges all the way past Sixth Avenue. And so that is, I'm guessing, three quarters to a mile stretch of cars backed up. That's just not acceptable. I encourage anyone to come out between 7:30 and 8:00. And if you're coming south, take a right on Reinhardt, go down to 13th, swing around and come out on Ninth Street, not 13th. Come out, try and turn back onto Bigland Road from Ninth Avenue. You're going to be sitting there for a long time. So the roundabout is going to serve more of the population than the 10th Street one is. And again, I'm not saying 10th Street isn't a viable project, but for right now, it needs to be pushed off for the three years, four years from now and do it at that time. We always seem to like we're rushing into projects. We've had three years to plan for the roundabout, so it should be pretty much ready to go. 10th Street, now, we're just starting to get going on it. So rather than rush into it, let's take our time, make sure it's done right, and do it three, four years from now, and get the Reinhardt Roundabout done now. Thank you.
Mr. Larson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I've got a lot to get caught up with here. But if someone could help me with the current cost estimate of the roundabout project.
From my recollection, under the new alignment, there's no properties that have to be bought. So the dollars are roughly the same as what the 10th Street one would cost. With the federal sub-target dollars, there is always a local share that has to come into play. And I can't remember, Steve, what is it, 10%, 20% that has to be local funds? Or maybe Mrs. Ellis knows. But either way, to get the whole 860, you've got to come up with some local math.
20%.
20%. Thank you.
20% minus engineering. And I think, yeah, engineering and inspection costs can't be included in that.
Thank you.
And I, I believe Clarence, the last estimate, I think we did for the roundabout, I want to say we were in that 1.5 million dollar range approximately, is what I recall. The one thing, yeah, I think, you know, I don't want to say yet at this point that no property acquisition would be required. You know, that's something that would definitely have to be looked into a little closer. If that's the project we want to stay with. I do know that, kind of on the intersection there of Reinhardt and Bigland, Water and Light has a, you know, a big transfer switch or whatever there that would need to be relocated. And I think that Water and Light was estimating about $100,000 to relocate that. So I think that's something, if, you know, if we're going to go that direction of the roundabout, I think that's something that Water and Light would probably have to plan for, to have that removed or relocated, I should say, you know, probably this summer. So... And again, you know, I guess, kind of where I'm at and, you know, and again, I will check with Earl Hogan about amending the STIP. But, but I know when we did have discussion, you know, last fall, I think the Council was leaning towards the 10th Street project for our federal project, so.
That's now how I left that meeting. I thought it was still pretty much up in the air and going towards the roundabout, so.
I know the last estimate we saw for a roundabout, when we were looking at options at 13th, and there we didn't have to acquire any property. Nancy, you can refresh my memory. And it came higher than any of us thought. I was hoping more toward a million, but aren't we seeing 1.8? The last number I saw, 1.8 to 1.9 million at 13th, does that ring any bells?
I believe you're right there, Mayor. I think.
It's a size difference. There's a size difference in the roundabouts at, at 13th and Bigland and, and Bigland and Reinhardt because of the, it's not a four-way intersection. So I know the one at Reinhardt was smaller.
Okay, good. Yeah, if we could freshen up those numbers, you know, adjusted for inflation, so as we have this discussion, that we could have as close to the, a most up-to-date estimate that we could get, that would be great.
Okay.
Thanks, folks.
Anybody else have any questions? Mr. Holmes.
Mr. Emery, that roundabout, is there any property owners or anybody out there that will be assessed for that roundabout? Or how does that? Who gets, who pays for that?
Yeah. I think the thought on that was, since, I mean, the roundabout would really benefit the city as a whole. I don't believe any of the roundabout would be assessed. So it'd have to be, you know, either local share, or, you know, we, we could use our state aid allocation dollars for that also. So, but I, but I don't believe if we're looking strictly at roundabout, none of that would be assessed.
Anybody else have any questions at this time? Mr. Demers.
Yeah, I just, thank you. I just pulled up what the STIP has programmed. It's, it looks like it's programmed for 1.67 for the entire with 860 coming from feds, 650 from other sources, and then 160 local. So that's what, that's in the, that's in the STIP document right now.
What would be the other sources?
I don't know if that's state aid, or I'm sure that's what we have programmed in.
It does receive on an annual basis, state aid dollars too. So we would be able to utilize our state aid dollars for that project also, whether it's the roundabout, whether it's 10th Street Northeast. I can try to give you more information for next week. Like you said, I'll kind of refresh those numbers on the roundabout at Bigland and Reinhardt, Bigland and 13th. And then, you know, we can kind of look at what our estimate of costs were for 10th Street also. Let me kind of give you a, kind of a summary breakdown of those three.
Thank you. Just one more question, kind of adding on to the transfer switch or the electrical distribution equipment that you mentioned is in the way. If, if the Water and Light could take a look at that specific piece of equipment and let us know, is it at the end of its useful life? And is it due for replacement anyway? You know, I think that that could be considered as part of this overall project.
Okay. Well, this is Keith Mickelson, General Manager. We, we can sure do that again. I know that, that expense was going to come out of our, our account. I know that. So I'll check into it.
Yeah, that was something we had kind of checked into quite a while ago, Keith. And you're right, the federal, we, we could not use federal funds to relocate that equipment. That would be a Water and Light cost.
Anybody else have any questions? Mayor.
Mr. Galstead, as you've seen these layouts, and I mean, we're going to have to see a more recent rendering of what this looks like. But it, it can be argued that adjacent properties are affected, and that's somewhat subjective and is somewhat, you know, up to the, the courts to decide. Ron, would you please, I mean, this is, this is not cut and dried as far as would it affect the adjacent properties or not. There's some, some latitude there and some unknown. Is that true?
Well, I mean, the last time, the last set of plans that I saw, it was questionable if we were going to need to purchase any property or do eminent domain or if it was going to be affected. So before I can answer any of those questions, I need to have a better handle on exactly the scope of the project and where it's going to be situated and if it's going to affect egress and ingress from any of the properties that surround it.
Would you please get with Mr. Emery to the latest rendering and see if, if that would be affected or not?
I can sure try, but no problem there.
Perfect. Thanks.
Anybody else have anything at this time? Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess to, to Mr. Vedder's point, I, I don't think the amendment process is that, is so big an obstacle that it should be the rule-out factor. I just think, I mean, we amend the tip on a pretty, pretty regular basis for Grand Forks. My thought is, is just we should have an understanding of what we want to do and what we can afford. It shouldn't be, you know, I, I just don't think that the technical argument is, is valid. I mean, even the case, I mean, otherwise, that's the only project that we can do. We shouldn't even talk about Bigland and 13th either. So I don't, I don't know exactly which one. I think both the, the Reinhardt and Bigland project is, and the 10th Avenue or 10th Street Northeast project are, I think they're equally beneficial. I think if we want to expand the industrial park, I think it's, it's going to be, it's necessary that we expand that, that corridor. But I've been a proponent of the Reinhardt, Reinhardt and Bigland roundabout as well. So I think, I just, I don't think that the, the amendment process, I know Earl's kind of thrown up some flags about the process. And I, I've worked with Earl for a long time. I just don't think he wants to change what we have as a plan. I mean, it goes to the point of, if you have a plan, you should stick to it, I guess. But, but we should evaluate our need and our ability to do these projects, I guess. So I don't know, you know, we have new member on the board. You know, maybe it would be worth a pretty in-depth kind of analysis side by side of all three projects and, and go from there. So we can, you know, step back and really make a hard decision determination.
Anybody else have anything from Mr. Emery? Do you have enough direction, Mr. Emery, what to bring back next week?
I do. Thank, thank you guys for all your input.
Move on. Number three, consider approval of the city's area transit safety plan for Seminole to MinDOT. Sellis.
Thank you, Council President, Mayor, Council members. In my RCI, I stated that the FTA requires anyone that receives federal dollars to have a certain number of plans for transit. One is a transit asset management plan, the other one being a safety plan. The safety plan was written by both City's Area Transit and myself, because City's Area Transit is our transit agency. And their, their federal agency and state agency is North Dakota DOT. They ran the plan through both Region Eight and North Dakota DOT, and our plan was approved. Now, on the Minnesota side, we have to take that same safety plan and have MinDOT review and then accept the plan, as North Dakota is truly our, our acting agency. So just quickly, the plan covers our safety targets and performance measures that we need to meet. I sent you our numbers for 2020. It addresses fatalities, safety events, which are accidents, injuries, and then our system reliability. So that's mechanical failures. Fatalities, our performance targets are set at zero. We met that last year. Reportable accidents, we were a little high last year. So again, we'll have to review, see what type of training and/or responses that we can make to bring down our targets, or to bring down our measures down to the acceptable safety target that we have set. We have less injuries than what's set for our performance target, and we hardly had any mechanical failures. So we're, we're doing pretty good with our safety plan. So all this requires is for us to approve the plan, submit it to MinDOT for our review, and then annually, I will be going through it with City's Area Transit, making any revisions or corrections or amending anything so that we can meet our needs and, and meet those performance targets. So if anybody... So if anybody has any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Nancy? I see none. Thank you, ma'am. Move on to number four, consider memorandum of agreement for metropolitan planning. Ms. Ellis?
The last memorandum of agreement that we had, and what that includes is it includes both state Mindots, or excuse me, both state DOTs, so North Dakota DOT, Mindot, includes both transit operators, so City of Grand Forks, East Grand Forks, the MPO, and then our federal partners. We all have to have an agreement as to who acts, who responds, what our roles are in all of the plans, transportation plans, studies, tip and STIP. I apologize for my dog. And so the last memorandum of agreement that we had was in 2010, and so we're just updating that with new names and members and getting that signed and settled. One of the things that this will help is that we are providing some federal dollars to MPO to do our transit development plan, and we need this agreement in place so that it shows that the MPO can in fact act as our subrecipient for that plan. So if anybody heard that over my dog, God bless you, so...
Anybody have any questions for Nancy? I see none, ma'am. Move on to number five, consider renewing lease agreement with probation office. Ms. Ellis?
The probation office lease ended in December of 2020, and so they're up again for renewal, and they would like to stay in City Hall, and they would like to stay at their lease term right now, which is $10 per square foot. This is similar to what the square footage lease amount is over at the infill. So right there, over there, they're at about $10 per square foot as well, and then they're going up a quarter every year. And the MPO right now is at $12.57 per square foot, and that's based on the Consumer Price Index from Denver. So there's a set by FTA or what the federal standards are for what they can pay for rent. So I'm just bringing it to your attention to see if we can again renew for another two years and if you have any comments or if you have any ideas on what you'd like to propose to them for the lease rate per square foot.
Anybody have any questions for Nancy? See none. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Move on to number six, request to purchase toolcat. Mr. Stordahl?
Thank you, Mr. President. So our current toolcat is a 2007 model. It's just timed upgrade, we're going, we have, we've put a lot of money into repairs the last few years. It's a budgeted item under our capital improvement plan to purchase a new one. Total cost was $53,601 per the state contract page. The trade-in value of our current machine is $14,390, which is a difference, we would pay $39,000 to $11,600. We have budgeted $39,410. So we would like to purchase a new one and declare surplus our current model in trade, on trade.
Anybody have any questions, Mr. Stordahl? Mr. Elms?
Mr. Stordahl, I understand what you're looking to do and what you want to do, but in your request, you said you were looking for a payloader or a loader, I should say, not a payloader, but a loader.
That was just a misprint.
Well, I just want to make sure that we're not, you're not going to end up cutting yourself short here, I guess, is what I was getting at.
No, no, I'm sorry, that was just a misprint in there.
Okay.
We would just like to replace the toolcat.
Okay, thank you.
Things that we use the toolcat for, to maintain the alleys now, we have a new machine to do that on the front of the toolcat. We also use it to spray mosquitoes and spray along the levees for weed control. And then we have a hydro seed machine for it as well, so we use it to repair bad spots, scuffed up spots along the berm and stuff like that. Gets a lot of use, but yeah, no, that was just a misprint. It should have been toolcat.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Demers?
Thank you, Mr. President. So when this gets paid through the capital fund, will a portion of it come through the mosquito enterprise fund or?
You know, that would be a question for Carla. Carla, can you hear this?
I'm thinking when we budgeted, didn't we budget it just out of public works?
I think you're right about that, Carla.
If you give me a minute, I can look at documentation. Okay? But I'm thinking it was just out of public works.
I think we purchased...
Purchased something else the other year from there.
Yeah, we purchased a pickup, I believe, out of the mosquito fund.
While you're looking, just one thing I was going to say is, you know, Parks had to ask for their toolcat for like three consecutive years. I think you should have to come back a couple more years before you get it.
Actually, that toolcat for $39,000 is actually out of the general fund, is not out of the CIP funding because it's only $39,000. Usually, we only look at doing that if they're over $100,000 or $200,000.
So when...
So this is in the general fund budget for 2020.
So with our mosquito fund, the purpose of it is to purchase chemical, pay for salaries? Is it also use, I think Mr. Stordahl said we use it to buy a pickup, so there is some capital expenditure through that fund? Or not?
Correct. So this was from 2020, you push it back to 2021, right, Jason?
Yeah.
Oh, then it would, I have it on the insect fund. For 35, Kubota tracks, $8,000 a ton truck, for $35,000, a mosquito spray for 16?
Yeah, that was, we purchased those, all three of those things.
Okay, then 2021, it is in the general fund, because I remember when we were cutting dollars that we had found some dollars from where we cut, and we put that back in because you traded in, and it was only $39,000, so it made the cut.
I guess, the reason I'm going down this line is I think when we have enterprise funds and they're for a specific purpose, we should use them for that purpose. Now, obviously, this is a multi-use tool, it'll be used as whatever, but I would think if we're going to, if we're going to have a mosquito fund and it's going to pay for our mosquito program, I don't know if it 100% pays for our mosquito program, but we should figure out what percentage we're going to use and apply that much of that fund to this, so...
And I think what Jason has done is that, obviously, there's equipment that are in public works right now that we use for the insect fund. And so I think he just kind of balances of, okay, we bought this last year out of the insect fund, we'll buy this out of public works because 90% of the time, we're going to be using it for public works. And I'm just, I just guessed 90, but I know Jason looks at that, and so Jason and I really don't talk about that because he knows, Jeremy knows, and so we don't want to deplete just the enterprise funds either because of general fund costs of equipment that are used specifically more for public works. And I, that, I think that's the case here, Jason, but you can...
Yeah, that's correct, Carla. The Kubota that we purchased, we use almost solely for just mosquito spraying. Where this toolcat doesn't get used every time, it might not get, you know, it might get used just a couple times throughout the year as far as spraying goes. If we have to do problem areas or something happens with the Kubota, something like that. So it really, it probably gets its most use in the summertime is right now doing alleys, alley work. So Carla's exactly right. We, you know, we use stuff back and forth, even wastewater stuff we use to do other street stuff once in a while and vice versa. So I think that's what we figured on this toolcat was that it's not, although it is used to spray mosquitoes, it's not its primary job.
My other understanding with that, Jason, is that some of this came to be when, you know, we looked at sharing with other departments, but for example, when we had flooding and we have flood cleanup, I mean, you know, Parks can't share with you because everybody needs one. And so I think we were, at the time, we were looking at that, you know, that we were short on equipment just with the spring we had trying to clean things up. So that was another reason why it came out of the public works general fund.
Thank you, and it's a good explanation. It goes maybe to the point that maybe we don't need as many extra fees on our, that, you know, maybe we should just be paying for everything out of the general fund and eliminate some of these fees if we're going to, if we have such a kind of a mixed use going forward. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Carla?
I just want to comment on the insect fund, and Jason can answer this better, but, you know, other years, the insect fund wasn't very plush with money because we sprayed a lot and with West Now and that. So I know we try to be conservative on what he spends in there just because we never have an idea what the summer will be like. We've been very lucky the last few summers where we haven't had to spray a lot, but that could change. And we had a couple years there where it was, there was a lot, and West Now was prevalent, so, you know, and Jason can answer more to that. But I know we do look at that, we look at, you know, spending our dollars as wisely as possible from every fund.
And my comment wasn't one that was against mosquito spraying, I think we should do it and do it often, but it goes to the point that there's some that believe that we should have fewer enterprise funds that are fees on our Water Light bill and have, just pay through them, through a general fund. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? I see none. Thank you, Jason. Number seven, request to purchase snowblowers. Mr. Stordahl?
Thank you, Mr. President. So this was also a budgeted item for the year, a snowblower. Originally, we were going to get rid of our 10 coal and purchase most likely a snowball. 10 coals, they've been having some issues with them. Our blower has been not too bad overall, but it's, it's really going downhill. It's 20 years old. We've spent just in the last two years $34,000 on it. Has even issues after being repaired. So as we're looking around, there's, you know, several different companies with snowblowers. One that's kind of risen to the top just in the last few years is LaRue, and we started looking into that more. And a lot of the surrounding communities have went to that. Grand Forks has one now that they, they really love. It's reliable, they've had it since 2017. It's been working really good for them. Feet River Falls has purchased one, Hillsboro, West Fargo, Fargo, Moore, and even some private companies around the area have went to them. So we started looking at prices of those instead. The machine itself looks smaller, although the horsepower is more than either of the two we have now. Our Snow Blast has just been, we've been having a lot of issues with it, not, not only when, when we have parts issues, but even when it's running properly with just snow dust, visibility-wise, can't see, casting ability, doesn't have any. So what we're proposing is to trade in surplus for trade both of our snowblowers and purchase two new LaRues. There's just a ton of positives in going with that company. Just the horsepower alone, the cut is about the same as far as width. Our current machines are about 268 and 280 horsepower. This new one is, would be 326. Another positive would just be keeping our parts the same. Their gearboxes and stuff like that seem to be holding up really well. And purchasing two and trading off the two that we have, we would still come out under budget at $289,884. We had budgeted $315,000. Some other things, I guess positives of it are, one is visibility and the ability to load trucks from both sides. It's compact, the mechanics have taken a look at them, like the accessibility of them to be able to work on them. The operators have talked to other operators and seen them work. They were very impressed. It's lighter so that we could use it on all three loaders if we had to. We could use either one on all three loaders. The two larger loaders obviously would handle them much better, but not only is it lighter by about 700 pounds than our other ones, but it's, it's also balance difference. So just the maneuverability and being shorter as well, it's, it's not so long as far as front to back. And so just the maneuverability is, is so much better. They have a reverse conveyor system as well, so when we spend, you know, sometimes hours trying to unplug something that's lodged in there, this way, a lot of times, just can, you can just backfeed it right out. Yeah, there's, it's a whole list of, I guess, positives to these blowers and everything we hear from other communities are, you know, Grand Forks has several, Fargo as well, you know, that run several different blowers, and they're all talking about switching, switching over to more and more of these LaRues. So I guess, in summary, our recommendation is to purchase two new LaRue D50s and surplus for trade our 10 coal and our Snow Blast. And with final pricing at $289,884.
Somebody have any questions for Jason? Mr. Elms?
Mr. Stordahl, I just want to say, even with your old equipment, you and your crew have done a great job keeping the streets clean this year.
Yeah, that's what we did last year.
It's a good thing we didn't get much snow, it sounds like.
Yet, yet.
Yeah, yeah.
Anybody else have anything? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Entertaining motion to adjourn.
Ooh.
By Vedder.
Second.
Second by Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion is carried, mean as adjourned.